Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming.
That's really difficult. Excuse me one second.
This is much easier. Okay. So, again, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thanks, everyone, for watching at home as well. So, we are going to start off with a nice little mission statement that I have to pull up. I apologize. I wanted to let everyone know a little bit more about the Tustin Chamber. I think it's something we hear. We don't know what it is. Just assume that, you know, oh, it's something with the city. They, you know, obviously work with businesses, so that's all I need to know. But our mission is to preserve the free enterprise system, sorry, the free enterprise system, to preserve and expand the potential of businesses and professional enterprises, and to provide civic, cultural, and social well-being to the city of Tustin and surrounding communities. Our ongoing goals include the development of service programs and channels of communication that are relevant and timely and effective in connecting business, education, to government, in general, the community of constituents to the city of Tustin. This is another thing that we're doing to make sure that businesses know, you know, what our candidates are all about, and, you know, making sure we, obviously, we all like them, but, you know, we want to know who we're going to vote for. It's very important that everybody registers and gets out there and exercise their freedom to vote. If I could have, actually, excuse me, I would like to introduce our council members who are kind enough to join us tonight. So, our mayor, John Nielsen, is here. Thank you, sir. Our mayor pro tem, Alan Bernstein, is here. Councilmember Al Murray. And councilmember Chuck Puckett. And if I could have councilmember Murray come up here and help us with the invocation, please.
Thank you, and if we can bow our heads for a moment of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for the beautiful day you have created. We are grateful for the many gifts you have provided, Orange County, a region rich in resources, diversity, and culture. We come together this evening in honor of you to share our thoughts on public service in the city of Tustin. Please bless us, Lord, and give us the knowledge and courage we need to do the right thing with thoughtful decisions that serve those who grant us the privilege to lead. Lord, please help us focus on how to work together for the benefit of your people. We ask that you help us to create a sense of unity of duty and worthy goals, and that you would remind us that you are a God of optimism, a God of hope, and a God of positive action. We ask that you bless our military men and women that provide for our freedoms, and those at home who provide for our public safety. Dear Lord, we thank you for all these things, and we ask that you guide us with your infinite wisdom. In your most precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Let that be a lesson to me. Have your tablet prepared before you start speaking. And now, if we can get the mayor up here, Mr. Nielsen, if you could join, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I was going to say, would you all please rise, but you beat me to it. That's great. Before we get started, I just want to say, please remember our active serving military and all of our veterans, and what they do to preserve our freedoms and our individual freedoms, and what a great country we live in to be able to cast votes and make decisions for our leaders. So, please join me in celebrating our country and saluting our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
I'd like to introduce our candidates now. First off, we have Dr. Alan Bernstein, a magna cum laude graduate of the New York College of Pediatric Medicine, oh, sorry, Podiatric Medicine. Dr. Bernstein holds a BA from Boston University and an MBA from the Healthcare Executive Program at the University of California, Irvine. He has served as a resident director of reconstructive foot and ankle surgeons. Dr. Bernstein served as president of the Orange County Pa- who?
Podiatric.
... pediatric association, and was the scientific chairman for the Western Foot and Ankle Conference. He participated in developing Cub Scout PAC 518, and has served as a Tiger Cub leader. His involvement in nonprofit, in the not-for-profit world, has been fueled by his passion for Israel, for Israel defined by his participation in Hillel, the Israel on Campus Coalition, AIPAC, JNF, as well as fulfilling teaching responsibilities for the Bureau of Jewish Education and local Hebrew schools. Latisha Clark is a community leader and a mother who is running for city council to strengthen and protect Tustin's unique quality of life. Latisha's extensive record of community involvement includes having served on the Tustin Community Foundation Board, the Tustin Street Fair Chili Cook-Off Committee, the Tustin Ranch Elementary School, Elementary School Site Council, and the Tustin Unified School District Superintendent's Council. She currently works as a Public Affairs Director for the East Coast, for the Coast Community College District. Latisha is a third-generation Orange County resident and a graduate of the Tustin High School. She holds a master's degree in public policy and a certificate in nonprofit management from John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. Mr. Chuck Puckett, since moving to Tustin in 1975, councilmember Puckett has served on more than 30 community boards in leadership capacity. A few of those were as president for Pepper Tree Homeowners Association, the Tustin Planning Commission, the Tustin City Council, and again on the Planning Commission from 2006 to 2012. He served as chairman of the Planning Commission four times, and has served as mayor in 1991. He was again elected by his fellow councilmembers as mayor in December of 2014, and served throughout December 2015. Chuck served on numerous county boards, and was honored as Tustin's Man of the Year for exceptional service to the community in 1986. He is also the president of the Boys and Girls Club of Tustin, okay, sorry, was also once the president in 1986, and is currently serving on the Endowment Board. Besides serving as councilmember, Chuck currently represents the city of Tustin on the Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Services Agency, Santa Ana Tustin Joint Powers Agency Senior Fund Board of Directors, and as the Tustin Unified School District Liaison. Mr. Austin Lombard. Austin was born and raised in Orange County and chose to live in Tustin to raise his family. He and his wife, Colleen, have three young children, four-year-old daughter Aubrey, three-year-old son Jack, and 11-month-old son Wyatt. Austin lives in Tustin Legacy, and his parents and brother's family also live in Tustin. Austin holds a degree in Business Administration from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and a law degree from Indiana University. Austin is an attorney and former reserve deputy with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. He is currently the chair of Tustin's Planning Commission, and is serving his fourth year on that commission. Ladies and gentlemen, your candidates. Mr. Jonathan Stone is part of our Board of Directors for the Tustin Chamber of Commerce. He will be our moderator tonight. And Mr. Ned Smith from the Tustin Chamber, and Dr. Richard Nelson from Foothill Community Association, will both be timekeeping tonight. Just to let everyone know, there was a chance for you to write your own comment down on some cards. Elsa will be walking around. Excuse me, questions. So, if you have a question that you'd like to ask the candidates, oof, I was going to call them all councilmembers. I was like, that's way wrong. So, Mr. Stone, you can take over from here.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Chris. Okay, just a real quick recitation of the ground rules, and then we'll begin. I'm going to ask a series of questions. The questions were developed by the Chamber of Commerce. There will be a chance toward the end of the evening for us to field some of the questions that we received from the audience. We'll give those questions in turn, and we'll rotate who begins answering the question. Each candidate will have approximately 90 seconds to answer. Our timekeepers will give you a signal when you've reached your 90-second limit, and we just ask that you finish your thought at that time. And, you know, don't make me bring the hammer down on you at the two-minute mark. So, if we're able to do that, we'll be able to get through our evening and wrap up about 8:30, and then we can do some politicking out in the foyer afterwards and break down the event. So, with no further ado, we'll begin the first question with Mr. Puckett. Identify the top priorities for the next city council. Give your plans to address them.
Thank you, John. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum on tonight. It's a great opportunity for us to meet you and for you to meet the candidates. We have got a great city council. We've had a great city council, excuse me, that has worked together for four years. We are, our biggest concern is trying to keep our funds in Tustin. The state, one of their big things that they're trying to do is to take money from the counties, money from the cities, to try to balance their budget. So, we've had some fights with the state in trying to keep our funds. We are wanting to develop the Legacy. We've got some projects that are coming on at the Legacy. We want to continue to develop Old Town. Old Town is really a tremendous asset that we're blessed to have. And I was able to achieve a 13-year dream last year by getting the lights, the trees wrapped and lit all year round in Tustin and Old Town. And that goes back to when I was in Ann Arbor, Michigan in 2012, saw what they did, and it was so beautiful that I wanted to get it done here. But it took 13 years. But it's, I think it's really added, it's added an aura to Old Town, and it's got a new spark. And, you know, we're looking forward to doing more things in Old Town, and we're looking forward to developing more projects in the Legacy. And we want to maintain what's going on in Tustin Ranch, and working with the police officers, and keeping the city safe.
Very good. Ms. Clark.
Well, John, I'd also like to thank you for having me this evening, and I just appreciate the crowd that's here tonight because it just shows that you're truly engaged in the process, and so I appreciate all of you for being here. Chuck really outlined a lot of projects that are going on. There are a lot of moving parts. And whether I'm elected or not, I think a priority for the council really needs to be communication. On the campaign trail, I'm hearing from several citizens that the communication between City Hall and residents is, there's something to be desired there. And I think the city has a great website right now, but it's a passive way of communicating with residents. It requires that the community go to the website and find out what's going on. And like Chuck mentioned, there's several moving parts going on with the development of the Legacy, new plans going on with Old Town. And so, my goal would be, if on the council, is to improve the communication and kind of bring us to the next level with push notification, text messages, opt-in email systems, and a way to campaign to the community and let them know that we want to hear from them. We want their input. And I think that it's important that we really relate to the community, that we want to hear their voice. And the only way to do that is to meet them where they are on their smartphones, and even people that don't have Wi-Fi, find a way to connect with them on an ongoing basis, on a regular basis, so that we're continually hearing that feedback from the community. Because when there's so many different things going on in the city, it's extremely important for us to have that buy-in and that input from the community that we serve. So, that would be my number-one concern. A friend of mine who serves on the Santa Ana City Council, he mentioned to me when running that I should have 10 points or 10 topics that I'm an expert about or that I know about, three as my platform, and one that I really feel that I can achieve, and that communication would be that one thing that I'd like to achieve on the council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Lombard.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and everybody at home watching. I sit here every couple of weeks as chair of the Planning Commission, and I haven't seen the room this full in quite a while. And so, it's nice to have the community out and involved, and, you know, participating in democracy. And I want to thank the, not only the chamber, but the city for hosting us, and the candidates for throwing their hat in the ring. It's not easy to run a campaign, and being a city council member or any politician really is a thankless job. Our city council right now is doing a tremendous job, and we really want to keep that momentum going. On that note, the next council priorities, I think, are the priorities of the community and Tustin residents. And a lot of those are what we've been addressed, been addressing on the Planning Commission for the last four years, and its development and redevelopment. We throw the term out revitalization. That's real. We want to revitalize Old Town. We want to do it right, though. We don't want to force inappropriate projects down into Old Town. We want to address the parking and traffic issues. And we don't want to do it too quick, but we also don't want to wait another 20 years to get it done. As Mr. Puckett also mentioned, Legacy, I live on the Legacy. I've seen the projects that have gone up, have been involved in Greenwood, Fire Station Number 37. We just considered Flight, which is a tremendous office space down on Boranka and Red Hill that the city council will be considering in the next couple of weeks. We have so much going on, and our staff is just tremendous in getting these things done. And the Legacy build-out is a chance that we have to do something right, and do it once and do it right. I'm getting the wrap-up sign. To connect the Legacy and Old Town, we need to, we need to really prioritize the Red Hill Corridor. That ties the two together figuratively and literally. And I know it's a big concern for people getting off at Red Hill, going to their homes, that that's been a little bit left unattended to for a while. I really want to make sure that we do something exciting there, and that benefits the community overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bernstein.
I also want to echo thanking everyone here, thanking the sponsors that come and take time with your busy days to share in the democratic process. We greatly appreciate it. Any questions? Because everything has basically, essentially been covered. However, never shying away from getting an opportunity to speak. The judicious build-out of the Legacy needs to continue. What we're looking at is some different alternative financing mechanisms right now. Many of the plots of land are conveyed via buying of that land. We're looking to possibly do some leasing so that we can have some long-term financial stability in the city. With regards to the technology, interestingly enough, during the time that I've sat on the city council, we have, in fact, revamped our website, which is much more interactive, informative, and easy to navigate than it was before. We also take advantage of Facebook as well. And so, we are in the middle of that renaissance with regards to utilizing technology to advance what's happening in the city and keeping our constituents informed. I also want to continue to keep the city safe. Tustin is one of the safest cities in the nation. It has a nationally recognized police force, which I'm happy to say I have the endorsement of, as does Austin, as well as Chuck. Given that, we also want to be financially and fiscally responsible while continuing to be fair with our police officers, giving them the best quality of life while watching all financial parameters so that we don't put our city in a difficult position. Currently, the city has 40 percent reserve. We're looking to continue and maintain that type of reserve. And that's all I have to say on that issue. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Our second question takes a little deeper dive. Recently, Santa Ana, the county, and several other neighboring cities have taken steps to address an increasing problem of homelessness. What can and should Tustin do to address the issue of homelessness in our city? And we'll begin with Ms. Clark.
Well, you know, homelessness is one of those issues. It's a multifaceted issue. We're talking about the people that you may traditionally know as homeless, that you see on the street, on the sides of the roads. So, there's that existing population. Then we also have the emerging poor. And when I served as the executive director of the American Academy of Pediatrics, I learned a lot about children who are homeless. And right now, Orange County has about 28,000 homeless children. And so, that's, we have to take that into account when we're talking about addressing our homeless population here in Tustin. The fact that Santa Ana has some changes going on with their Civic Center area, we're a next-door neighbor of Santa Ana, so we have to think about that comprehensively. I don't think it's something that we can do in a silo. We'll have to work with Santa Ana. We need to work with Orange. We need to work with Irvine. And it's a regional problem, I believe, because there's nothing we can do in the city to completely eradicate homelessness. So, we do have to work with our neighboring cities. Orange County has a 10-year plan around homelessness. I believe it's supposed to be completed by 2020, but we know we're nowhere near that completion of that plan. But I think we need to look toward the county's plan, and we also need to think long-term, short-term for that problem, around that problem in homelessness here in the city. But again, it's a regional issue, and we're going to have to work with our neighboring cities, and we won't be able to operate in silos here in Tustin.
Thank you. Mr. Lombard, your comments.
I agree that homelessness is a multifaceted issue. It's a complicated one to just throw a blanket response at. But I think, on a simplistic level, we need to be engaged in the dialogue. We need to step up and have a seat at the table. The city's not going to solve homelessness, but the city can help homelessness within the city limits. And on that note, Tustin is a leader in homelessness and addressing the homeless problem. Jim Palmer's in the audience somewhere, from the OC Rescue Mission in the Village of Hope on the Legacy out there. Really, just a tremendous facility that Tustin is proud to call part of its community, and doing just great things, wonderful things, getting people off their feet, getting them pointed in the right direction. Another project that I was involved in on the Planning Commission was Veterans Outpost on Newport Avenue, where we actually have housing designated for homeless vets. And if you haven't been there, you should walk by or drive by and knock on the door and visit it. Really touching stories. A little baby was born there about three weeks ago. They named her Hope. If that's a coincidence or not, because of the Village of Hope, I don't think so. But just tremendous things. In fact, on personal note, I was in jury duty today in Santa Ana, and I was standing on the 10th floor, looking out the window at the homeless encampment surrounding the Civic Center there. We don't want Tustin to go down that path. We don't want to let it go unattended to. We need to talk to these people compassionately, talk to them about what's causing their homelessness. It's not just one issue that causes somebody to be homeless. It's a multitude of issues. So, we need to be at the table, be, have a positive dialogue with them, be compassionate, and act now, before it gets worse.
Thank you. Dr. Bernstein.
Tustin is a very compassionate city, a very generous city. And the city has coordinated with many of the not-for-profits that exist here in the city of Tustin to address homelessness and provide services for them, and attempt to get them off the street. But it also is, in fact, a county problem. And so, Tustin has taken an active leadership role in the Associated California Cities of Orange County Organization and their Homeless Committee. Just about a week ago, we had a meeting. There's about 50, 50 different people that are involved, various cities throughout Orange County, and various people are addressing homelessness in some innovative ways. We are now attempting to share those with each other, and not sort of reinvent the wheel, but to take those successes and move forward with them. Austin mentioned the Veterans Outpost, the presence of the OC Mission on the Legacy. This is not by accident. The Veteran Outpost idea took, was germinated between Jim Palmer and the current city council, with the leadership of the mayor, and the rest of his colleagues, in that we've provided housing for 32 homeless veterans at a renovated facility. I invite all of you to come and visit the outpost on Red Hill Avenue, and really look and see what's happening there. Tustin is not a hand-out city. It's a hand-up city. And what we've done is managed to give a hand up to homeless veterans here in Orange County, and address two problems. There should never be a homeless vet in the United States of America, and Tustin is taking a leadership role in that endeavor.
Thank you. Mr. Puckett.
I think one thing that we have to do is to find a way to clone Tyron Jackson. Tyron, those of you that know him, has done a phenomenal job in working with the homeless and providing services. It's amazing what he has done. I attended a gala, several of us attended a gala, I think Friday night, at Wilcox Manor, where we raised several thousand dollars for Operation Warm Wishes. And if we had more people that have the heart and the love and the caring that he has for the homeless people, we wouldn't have a homeless problem. So, first of all, we got to learn how to clone somebody and get some more Tyrons. But we're so fortunate that we have Jim Palmer and the Rescue Mission in Tustin. That's our answer, is we need to work with the Rescue Mission to help solve our problem. And you're talking about the Veterans Outpost on Newport and Sycamore. The first graduate from that program was Daniel leaving, and he graduating and moving on. And it's just amazing to see what's happened, to see, it brings tears to your eyes, to see what's happened and how these people that have not had any place to go have been serviced, these vets. One of the gentlemen, we bought all-new furniture, and Randy is in the audience. The Exchange Club has gathered a lot of, raised most of the funds to fund these apartments. But he had brand-new furniture in his suite, in his apartment, but he hadn't sat on it for two or three weeks because he'd never had that nice of furniture in his whole life. And it's just sad to think of people that have had to live that way. But we can, we can take care of our homeless problem by working with Jim Palmer and having more empathy.
Thanks. Moving on to our third question, we'll begin with Mr. Lombard. What is the city's role in promoting business? Please characterize your vision for the relationship between the city and its Chamber of Commerce.
The city's role in promoting business is to set the stage and to be pro-business. Tustin is a pro-business city, and I think there's a lot of business owners in the audience that understand that and appreciate that. The unfortunate reality is that we're a city amongst many in California, which has overregulated our free enterprise and our business community. But from a city level, and what we can do is get rid of any regulation that doesn't make sense, take a practical stance and approach to looking at real solutions to everyday business owners' problems. And on that note, the relationship with the Commerce is to open that dialogue, to have a channel where the Commerce can come to the city council and the staff, talk about issues that they're facing in a real day, and then talk about creative solutions. Tustin is not a city that wants to dictate, dictate a business approach or a business platform. We want to leave it to the experts who start the businesses and know how to run them. And I think that's really what it is. Set the stage for success. Get out of the way, and let your businesses succeed.
Thank you. Dr. Bernstein.
Tustin is definitely pro-business. From, in my experience over the last four years, what we've done is streamlined the permitting process, make it easier. There's been a period of time that we've actually waived business permits to attract more business and get more people involved in the city of Tustin. The city is in current, has been in discussions, and we created a transient occupancy tax, which we actually raised from about 6% to 10%. Still being very competitive with the surrounding cities, so that we could, in fact, create a potential revenue source for the chamber to help initiate and create a tourism board here in Tustin. That's how much we think of the city of Tustin. I agree with Austin 100%. The city council can set the stage for financial success in this city, and then get out of the way and let those businesses do what they do best. For those of you who have had an opportunity to walk down Old Town, you'll see that now we have sidewalk cafes in Old Town. That is, that is an example of addressing an issue, being asked by people who wanted to create a business opportunity and create something different in Old Town. And we went through the process, and now it is much easier, given that now we have a streamlined process, to be able to do so. But that is an innovation that we all supported, and we are all currently enjoying in Old Town.
Thank you. Mr. Puckett.
I believe Tustin is a business-friendly city. As I talk to people, I hear that, how easy it was to work with our staff as they were coming into the city. Occasionally, you hear a complaint, but that's been very seldom that I've heard a complaint. And it's always good to hear good things about our city. I think the hotel tax that we put on, raised from 6% to 10%, was a step in the right direction, and that's, that was and that was stimulated really and pushed by the chamber. And what we need to do now is that we've raised these extra funds, is to figure out how to share that increased revenue with the chamber, whether it be hiring an executive director or something in that nature. But there's got to be some way that the chamber shares in that increased revenue that we've generated from the increased taxes, because we're going to have more hotels out on the legacy as things progress. So it's going to be a great revenue source, but we need to share that with the chamber.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
I think all the candidates here talk extensively about supporting our existing small businesses, which is extremely important. But it's also important to nurture new small businesses here in Tustin. I think that we really need to reward entrepreneurs here in Tustin. People who grew up in the area or have an affinity for the city, if they are encouraged to start a small business here, you can pretty much count that they're going to stay here, they're going to fight to remain here in Tustin and to grow their business here. And they already know the community, they already have a good affiliation with the residents here. So I would love to start at the ground level of promoting entrepreneurship. I have nine-year-old twins, so I'm always thinking kind of early, how do we foster some of those ideas? So I would love to bring an idea that I've had on the table for a while, to bring a lemonade day here to Tustin where we encourage young people to start their own lemonade stands. We encourage them how to, or show them how to build a business plan, and maybe through the chamber. And we support them marketing their own lemonade stand, and we tell residents around the city how to support them. And that's how you foster that idea of entrepreneurship very early, but I believe in setting, planting a seed, and I'm hoping that we'll have a generation of entrepreneurs that want to do business here in Tustin and stay here in Tustin and invest their dollars right here in the city. I also believe that, you know, we have the largest veteran population here in Orange County, well, I'm sorry, the third-largest veteran population here in Orange County. I think there's a way for us to encourage local businesses to hire veterans. That's one way that we can support businesses with job growth. And, you know, IT's on the rise. They provided over 60,000 jobs in Orange County last year. We really need to start going after tech firms and encouraging them to do business here in Tustin because there is job growth there, and they pay great.
Very good. Thank you. I want to commend all the candidates on your brief responses. We're moving very, we're on time and on schedule, and thank you so much for keeping to your allotted time. It makes the whole event go better. I would remind our audience here in the chambers, if you do have a question you want to ask, please write it down and begin to collect those now. Elsa in the back will be coming around if she has paper and pens. So if you need one, if you have a question, there you go. Just show a hand, and she'll get one to you, and try to incorporate those questions toward the end of the session. Moving on to question four, and I believe it's, Dr. Bernstein's up first. And this has to do with development. Based on our current population, Tustin lacks a suitable number of parks and open spaces. The plans for Tustin Legacy have routinely included ample park and open space to bring Tustin's park-to-population ratio in line with other cities in the county. More recent legacy drawings seem to have reduced the amount of open space. What are your feelings on this, and what is the best way for the city council to address the open space needs of our community? Dr. Bernstein.
Thank you. There are several plans on the board with regards to open park space in the legacy. The Linear Park, of course, as many people are aware of, will encompass the entire length of the legacy, providing ample open space for many different activities that are currently enjoyed by our citizens, biking, walking, a little bit of nature hike, that type of endeavor. We are in the process of sending out to bid for the Tustin Veterans Memorial Park. Will be an additional park. We have currently renovated several of our parks that already are established here in Tustin, and we are currently considering further construction and renovation for other parks here in Tustin. Tustin has a significant number of parks at present that are viable and well-populated. And open space has been a central consideration since I've been on the city council, particularly with the development of the legacy. We've renovated and reinvigorated the parks that we do have, keeping them also delivering water efficiently, as you all know, with the drought. And we have on the board several specific areas, taking into full understanding that the county also has a sizable area that they own, and that conveyance is strictly for parkland. If they determine that they want to endeavor and try anything else with reverse construction there, they have to come through the city. The city has repeatedly explained to the supervisory board that parkland is of paramount importance and must be maintained in consideration of how to develop that area.
Thank you. Mr. Puckett.
Tustin has some beautiful parks, and the one that stands out right now that's on the drawing boards is the Victory Park that's going to have the Veterans Memorial. That's about 30 acres, and it's going to be very nice, really right across the street from the Rescue Mission. It'll be a very nice one that's completed. We've completed some other little parks in the legacy in the last few years. The Linear Park, as Doc says, is going to be very, very nice, and it'll run from the Baranca-Red Hill corner all the way up to the northeast corner, up by the train station. The, Orange County was supposed, had given, shown plans to the residents for an 84-acre regional park that surrounded the North Hangar. Since that hangar was damaged, those plans have kind of gone into limbo. So the county is trying to figure out ways that they can use that land to generate some revenues. But the one thing that we're going to make sure that doesn't happen is that all of that land does not go to revenue sources. We're going to make sure that a good-sized part of that property is going to be parkland. So we want to do everything we can do to increase the number of parks that we have in Tustin, and, you know, we're proud of what we got, but we need more. We never can have too many parks.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Well, I use the parks a lot with my kids, and I think we have some great parks here in Tustin. And I think the Community Services Commission does a great job. Dave Wilson with the Parks and Rec Department does a great job promoting our parks and having events there that bring the community to the parks. However, I think the community wants more than just green space. Green space is great for high-density areas, but, you know, I'm a mom. After dropping my kids off at school, and I'm talking to the moms, and, you know, a big issue, and we know our parks serve our vulnerable populations, primarily our kids and our seniors, they use the parks to recreate and to exercise. And so the chemicals that we use for pesticides, I think parents are concerned about, you know, what's included and making sure that it's non-toxic and going towards that avenue. I also believe that parks can be an educational tool for our kids. You know, we can have horticultural programs in the parks, and the different things that we plant in parks could serve as an educational tool. So I just think that the parks can serve as a greater tool than just open space, just green space, and a part where we, an area where we exercise and recreate, but it can serve a multitude of tools for our community. And so I'm all for more parks, but I'm also an advocate of utilizing what we currently have and using the best value out of what we currently have within the city.
Thank you. Mr. Lombard.
I think one of the biggest issues around our parks is that we drive to them in park and get out of our cars and then enjoy them. And a lot of the legacy plans involve a walkable and bikeable community. I think we want to see more of that throughout the city. We like our parks because it gets us outside, it gets us running around and exercising. And I think if we have a more walkable, bikeable, strollable community connecting our neighborhoods and connecting our parks, that alleviates some of the demand for the parks. With that said, I do value green space very much. I have three kids. My two-year-old, he's now three, was in the City Baseball League. He's a lefty, and he's got a great swing. And they're both involved in the soccer program, and, you know, they love being outside and using our parks. So keeping our parks as robust and healthy and fresh as possible and clean as possible, encouraging private developers when they come to town, including the legacy, to have green space and to think creatively in how they can integrate that green space with other existing developments is a key priority for me. And on council, I'll definitely be a leader in making sure that happens.
Very good. Thank you. Our next question, and we'll begin with, oh, we're back to the top of the hour here.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Puckett. Great schools make great communities. What is your view of the role of our city government as it relates to supporting the education of students in the city of Tustin?
I'm glad you asked that question, because when Doc and I ran four years ago, there were a lot of problems between the city and the school district. The school district had sued the city, the city had countersued the school district, and it was just ridiculous that we were spending money fighting each other. One of the concerns that we had was to try to improve relationship between the school system, the school district and the city. And that happened really very quickly. We were able to settle those lawsuits out of court. We've got a very good working relationship now with the school district. We were awarded a very nice plaque at their award ceremony last year because of the way the school district and the city have worked together. It's been a long time since that's happened, but that's one of the things that we, I think it's probably one of the things that I'm most proud of accomplishing during the last four years, is bettering the relationship between the school district. Because Tustin, as Dr. Franklin says, we graduated 98% of the kids in the Tustin School District from high school, way over the county average and the state average. And, you know, we ought to be able to work to get to 100%. So let's keep the relationship that we've got between the school district and the council. So it's going to be good for all of the citizens in Tustin.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Well, I've had the pleasure of serving on the superintendent's parent advisory council for several years, as well as my kids, Tustin Ranch Elementary School Site Council. And so I have had a firsthand account of how well our schools are doing. And I'm very proud of our schools here in Tustin. I think we're often compared to our neighbor in Irvine and how great their schools are doing there. But really, we have schools that can compete just with Irvine and sometimes are even better than the schools in Irvine. So I think we really need to have a hand in marketing how great our schools are. But we have some challenges, I think, that we need to address. We have an aging population throughout Orange County, but in Tustin, in 50 years, in 2060, the 65 and over population will nearly double. And so we're seeing a declining rate pretty rapidly of a younger population. So what that means is that we're going to see kindergarten enrollment declining, we're going to see schools that may have to close or consolidate because we can't fill the seats. So that's a real issue that we need to address, I think, as a city. And that means marketing toward younger families, that means addressing housing costs because it is expensive for new families to move here. So that's an issue that I'd love to address. And really, you know, we're talking about all schools throughout Tustin, north and south of the five freeway. There are a lot of our schools that are Title I, and 80% of some students are on free and reduced lunch. And so that doesn't happen by accident, and I think we do need to address some of the issues going on in our economy to make sure that students are living their best quality of life. But that's a direct relationship that we can have with the schools to make sure that our families are not living in poverty and going to school hungry and being able to succeed at their highest level. And so that's something that I think we can work on and keep that great relationship, like Chuck mentioned, with the TUSD. Thank you.
Mr. Lombard.
So the city's role in education is somewhat limited because we have a separately-elected school board. And they are the ones in charge of implementing programs, opening schools, the Title I programs that Ms. Clark mentioned. That's their responsibility. However, the city can't act as a partner with the school board. And I think that's what Mr. Puckett was speaking to, is that we should not be fighting people that have the same constituents as we do. It's all, we all have the same kids, they're going to the same schools, and the goal should be the best education for them. So insofar as that's the goal, the city can help the school board accomplish its goals. The city can push the school board along when we see it fit. And a great example of that was with the Tustin Academy High School and Junior High property disposition on the legacy recently. The, under the leadership of the current council, we were able to put a clause in there that was to open Heritage Elementary School this year, and that's been a great success. And understanding the long-term trends with populations, I don't think anybody with kids right now cares too much about that. They care about where their kid is going to go to school tomorrow, next year. And so one of the goals I'll have on council is to make sure that we open that middle school and high school on the legacy. We need it. We saw it with the Heritage, as soon as Heritage Elementary, as soon as it opened, kids were running into it, and the school board's doing a great job with that school. We need more of the schools like that in Tustin. We can encourage good education, but we can't dictate it. We can help with allowing, you know, pushing projects along and encouraging the school board to do the right thing when necessary.
Thank you.
Austin clarified exactly the position and what influence that the city can have on the school board. There are two separate, different boards, and they must work in conjunction with each other, because again, we do in fact serve the same constituency. The relationship between Tustin Unified School District and the city has been as good as it's been in the last 15 or 20 years. So much so that Chuck and I got the full endorsement of the Tustin Unified School District Board for reelection. The project on the legacy with, excuse me, the building of the school and the legacy and opening of Heritage was again tied to the development of the land for the middle and high school. That project will provide the people in Tustin, particularly those that live in or near the legacy, with a wonderful educational experience. Tustin Unified School District is one of the best school districts in the country. There's no doubt about that. We have the most fabulous teachers, we have the most fabulous school administration. It is a pleasure to go and really hear Dr. Franklin talk about the superintendent schools, talk about how wonderful Tustin School District is. But make no mistake about it, the job of the city is to make the city the best city that it can be. Because the best city that it can be will then attract the population to fill those schools. And what we've done is improve the relationship between the two, where it's as good as it's been, and we look forward to maintaining that type of relationship going forward.
Very good. Thank you, doctor. Question six. What policies should the city implement in regards to our historic downtown? What, if any, changes or initiatives ought to be undertaken vis-à-vis zoning, preservation, and/or development? And we'll begin with, I'm sorry, Ms. Clark.
That's okay. You know, I know there's a plan in place to do some redevelopment in the Old Town area, and I think that the city has a big hand in deciding what happens in that area. But I'll go back to the initial question and what I thought was of the city council's primary concern right now, and that's communication. I kind of witnessed what took place with the proposal of the 140-unit development that's scheduled to take place in Old Town. And it's a high-density development, and in many ways, of course, we need housing in Tustin. We've talked about high housing costs here in Tustin, and I think it's wanted by a lot of the business community. However, some of the local residents were not extremely pleased about the development, and I think mainly because the communication wasn't there. They weren't, they didn't feel informed or included very early in the process. And I just think that that's something the city can do, especially when you're talking about a very sensitive area like Old Town. And because I grew up in the area, I went to Tustin High School, there's a lot that I treasure about the city, and Old Town's one of those places that make Tustin so special. And so I think because I have that background here in the city, I appreciate that it's a very treasure jewel by the people in Old Town. And the people that live there want to be included every step of the way. And I don't think they'll always have a NIMBY sentiment, but that if they're included and if their input is valued and taken into account every step of the way, you will see very smart and thoughtful development happen in Old Town that benefits both the business owners and the homeowners.
Thank you. Mr. Lombard.
Thank you.
Old Town is a very, very special place. We don't have too many districts like that in Orange County or in California, really, that has the historic charm that Old Town does. Mr. Puckett talked about the lights, that's just one element of what really makes our Old Town very special. But that said, a lot of our business owners, and I think the audience here understands this, a lot of our business owners are saying that they don't have enough foot traffic to keep them alive and prosperous. We hear from business leaders all the time that we wanna get more people into Old Town. How do we do that? On the other hand, we hear that there's parking issues, there's traffic issues that are very real, and nobody wants to add more parking issues and more traffic issues on top of what already exists. So what the city council's done under the city council leadership and the planning commission is we've put together a, a specific plan for the Old Town area that addresses both issues. Potentially bringing people into Old Town, walkability, while addressing parking issues, transportation issues in kind. The high-density project that Ms. Clark referenced, high dens, high density is kind of a catchphrase these days, but it means a lot of different things. 140 units that are owned condos or single-family homes, if you wanna call them, they're kind of both, in place of an industrial complex is a good move on, in my opinion. I actually moved for approval of the project. A couple of weeks ago, we sat here for two and a half hours with the residents of Old Town and walked through a lot of the issues. But that's the first domino, if you will, in a specific plan that the council is looking to approve in the next few weeks, I think it is, that will really, really revitalize Old Town for the better. I know it's, it's uncomfortable for change a lot of times. What you want in your city council is leaders who can analyze problems, listen to their constituents, and make tough decisions for the best of the community. And I think that's what we got going on in Old Town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bernstein?
Ditto what Austin said. Thank you. No, let me just clarify a couple of things. As Austin spoke about the specific plan, which sits back and takes a look at the key, key elements of what you're going to do to, to renovate a particular area. We're looking at two issues that the residents in Old Town, rightly so, are concerned about, and that's parking and traffic. And so we take each one of those elements as, very seriously, because with any type of development, you're typically gonna increase the population, increasing the population. And what we wanna do is we wanna attract feet down to Old Town. The businesses that are in Old Town wanna see increased traffic down there with regards to shopping, and, and it is my intention to make Old Town a destination, not an afterthought here in Orange County. It is unique, it is beautiful, and we wanna develop it while we maintain its history while looking to the future. That 140-unit complex, I also agree, makes sense rather than an industrial area there. That is the type of effort that is well-thought-out, that is shared with the community, that the alternatives are discussed with our constituents. Nothing happens in this city without getting input from its constituents. And being out pounding the streets in the precincts, I've never heard one person to date complain about the city doesn't communicate well with what it's doing in the city. All these meetings are public, they're all posted easily, and, and they're easily attainable, well in, well in advance. And particularly, we have, we've had several town hall meetings regarding how to develop the strategic plan for Old Town. So it is my impression and is my experience that Tustin is interacting very well with its constituents, taking their direction, and then making the tough choices that need to be made to help develop the city appropriately.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Puckett?
Old Town is a tremendous gem, and we're fortunate to have that in our, in our city. We've got several restaurants that are looking to come in on El Camino. The outdoor seating from the American Grub, that's just one thing that, that adds a lot of ambiance to, to that area. Especially now that the trees are lit and you can sit out there and enjoy the lights and, and all, all, all year, all year round. But we have to take advantage of the parking structure that we've got there. We need to revitalize the parking structure and make sure that people are aware of that so that we eliminate a, a parking problem. And, and I, I think we need to look at this project that we're talking about replacing the industrial, industrial project, and that the homes are designed to, to correspond with the Old Town image and elevations. So there's a lot that we can do, and I think, I think we've got a council that's really interested in, in maintaining and even in enhancing the charm of Old Town, because it is a tremendous asset to the city of Tustin.
Thank you. So last call on questions from the audience. We have a few. I'd like to get a few more, if possible. Are there any others? You have just a few minutes to get them in, otherwise we'll go with what we've got. Our next question is related to the unincorporated 92705. So, lost my spot here. Where did I put that piece of paper? Austin starting the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lombard. Please share your position on the city's relationship with unincorporated Santa Ana, North Tustin, 92705. What, if any, changes in that relationship would you like to see? And I should note that this is the question we had to include in order to get Dr. Nelson to come and be our timer tonight.
And thank you for being here, Dr. Nelson. My position is that North Tustin is part of our community, business and otherwise. A lot of folks that live in North Tustin shop in, in Old Town and other parts of Tustin. And as a city, we should do everything to partner with our neighbors, be it unincorporated North Tustin, Irvine, Santa Ana, Orange, whatever it is. We need to be in cooperation and do everything we can to be symbiotic and work together. I have heard from North Tustin residents some concerns about sheriff response times. I get that. I'm a former reserve deputy with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Response times are a big deal to me. But until North Tustin decides and pushes the county to switch, perhaps having a different agency serve them, all we can do is try to help as much as we can on, on that issue. Water, we have Dr. Bernstein here, who's the water expert, but providing good water, good quality water to North Tustin is, is obviously key, given our, our current state of the drought. A few of us were on the Metropolitan District of Southern California's trip up to the Bay Delta in Sacramento a few weeks ago, and really got an understanding of how critical water resources are and how difficult it is to get good water to, to people. So those are, those are key, key issues that I see kind of high-level. But really, just having an open ear and being a good neighbor and a good partner with those residents. You know, our projects impact our neighbors, our traffic impacts our neighbors. So working together and hand-in-hand, I think is really what you wanna do with, with any of your neighbors, including Dr. Nelson's and North Tustin.
Dr. Bernstein?
I think that the relationship with North Tustin has continued to improve and is markedly better than it was when I entered the council. As, and, and the reflection of that is there, there are several, more than several, North Tustin residents here among us this evening, and thank you for your attendance. I don't separate North Tustin from Tustin. As far as I'm concerned, the success of Tustin reflects in North Tustin and vice versa. Our water enterprise does business there. We determined, and, and the council voted on a, a, an issue with, with regards to the maintenance of the sewer system that involved, that involved all of North Tustin virtually, and determined that a, a local purveyor of water, one was more inclined to do a better job than another because their entire enterprise virtually exists within North Tustin. So the city has worked in conjunction with North Tustin on several different issues over the last four years, and it is my intention to continue to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Puckett?
I think Doc spelled that out very well. We took a, we took a role with Rick Nelson and, and his group, the FCA, in working with the sewer project. I serve on a committee with, with the mayor and, and a couple of gentlemen from North Tustin and how we can better relations. We can, I, I, North Tustin is certainly in the Tustin sphere of influence, and we just consider North Tustin a part of Tustin. The boundaries of Tustin are kind of screwy on the north end anyway, and you can't really tell when you're in and out of the city in some places. So it would be nice to smooth some of those boundaries out, but it's gotta be that the residents wanna, wanna do that. But I, I can only see the, the relationship becoming stronger between these two groups. And we're certainly, as a city, gonna be stronger when we can better relations with, with the North Tustin folks, the foothill communities. And I proudly wear my FCA hat because that we wanna have an excellent relationship with, with the Foothill Communities Association.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Clark?
I, I agree with the candidates here that, you know, North Tustin residents, if you...